To the sentence nation. Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
For that rather love. Appreciate it. Thank you. Karen, please note, uh, trustees and tenants, department heads and officials. Over to on Zoom. Right, uh. Motion in a second for the approval. Following minutes. February fifth, twenty twenty four village board. Also to file the October fourth, twenty twenty three, two new development authority meeting. January eighth, twenty twenty four, board of public works. January ninth, twenty twenty four, public safety committee. January tenth, twenty twenty four architectural review board. January fifteenth, twenty twenty four finance committee meetings, minutes as presented. I'm making motion.
Thinking a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Subject changes. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. There is, okay, is there anybody in the audience who should be third? Agenda or agenda item? Okay, so we have two votes here. Three?
I feel like you have four.
Four, alright, so you have two nuts. We'll start over here. Um, please come to the microphone, state your name. Address.
Kyle Heinz, seven one two heritage port.
You can go ahead.
Good evening, uh, I would like to speak on a non-topic or a non-agenda topic and make sure that what I'm about to say goes on public record. Uh, my name is Kyle Heinz, I live in the Heritage Settlement neighborhood, uh, here to express my dissatisfaction with the road construction plan. That was implemented in our subdivision last year, uh, by the department of public works and approved by this board. Uh, our neighborhood needed new roads badly, but the decision to cut width of the road by four feet and install gravel siding was the wrong choice. It was a choice made to save money, not to improve the quality of life of the residents. Uh, they're an already established neighborhood, not a commie highway or a new development. Several of us voiced our concerns and even petitioned to change the product, but we were ignored. Now, every homeowner in our subdivision has a giant mess in our yards, the gravel is loose, uneven and prompt to erosion. It creates dust, noise and safety hazards. It also lowers the value of our properties and the aesthetics of our community. I personally have sent several emails to all of the board members, but have only ever heard back from three of you. I find it incredibly frustrating to voice valid concerns multiple times and only get a response from the same three of you. We're all elected representatives and you should be concerned, we're too broke for you, far unhappy. Our, uh, our neighborhood deserves better and we're looking for solutions, not Band-Aids. I know that the three board members who did reply to me spent time not only talking to me about the issues, but did come to our subdivision to see the mess per its hand. I appreciate their efforts and willingness to listen, I urge the rest of you to do the same. When the snow melts again, I think it would be worth your time, uh, to a visit to our neighborhood to see what we have to deal with. You all play an important role as village trustees. And you can, um, think for yourselves and form your own opinions. That, that you, that by seeing our neighborhood after only a partial winter, you will understand our frustration and agree that something needs to be done. I'm going to remind you all by saying a very important part of our village's motto yet again, quality life naturally. This motto should not be taken, uh, just as a slogan, but a guiding principle for your decisions. Our road construction plan was not in, or that was imposed on our neighborhood, does not reflect this motto. And it does not serve the best interests of the residents. I hope you will all work with us to find a better solution, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next.
Peter Schmuller, seven through two heritage work, um, was talking about the Heritage Settlement area again. Uh, many of us continue to email DPW and trustees over the.
They should be in the microphone.
Oh, many of us continue to email with DPW and trustees over issues in our neighborhood regarding stolen shoulders. And we'll receive this stopping in the future since. Quite often, um, we email often about the stones being scattered in the roadway. Due to the corner being cut in vehicles, mostly where the T intersections are. Most of that does come from like delivery drivers and every. Biggest concern is. We email and. They cut out the road, the roads to bring out the stones, um, two, four weeks later it comes back again. So I'm kind of looking for like a long-term solution. Biggest issue is like the motorcycles, mopeds going around pedestrians running and walk, I run in the same area all the time, um. Kids riding the bikes and everything, so it's a little bit more of a concern. Regarding that. Uh, we also have the standard issues during winter, we totally understand it, I'll go through. I split the shoulders. Get it, it's just, is there a long-term plan or is there going to be us emailing every? Bring, hey, can you guys complain about the responsibility, is it, you know, and where does that responsibility end? Does it go ten feet into our yards? Or does it stop right at the yellow shoulder, so? Something. Actually. Figure out what's going on instead of just being left in the dark. Um, lastly, comparing our subdivision to other rural area isn't a fair comparison, like road is created for a rural area, we get it. But. Our lots are half the size. Many of us are on the roads more often than other neighborhoods that have two acre lots, we have quarter to under a half acre lots. Well, I think the density should have played a bigger role in that. The other thing was the big lack of communication from the beginning of this was the most frustrating part. Nobody knew anything of. Narrowing the road by four feet. Until it was pretty much too late and nobody wanted to change any plans anyways. So I understand like the minimum amount of notification was made by the village. But there wasn't anything continued. Um. That, I think. Has a big area improvement, especially when it comes to meeting that minimum standard. Or notifying everybody, not just our neighborhood, but you know, what else is going on with, uh, any other projects?
Thank you. Next.
Dear Morandi, seven twenty-three here at Chord. I'm questioning who's gonna come and break out my front yard?
Please speak into the microphone.
I want to know who's going to come and break out my front yard with all of your stones. Putting the plows pushing them into my yard, trying to clearly the area for the, uh, mailboxes, I've got stones all over my front yard. Lisa came and looked at it, she can verify that it's a real mess. And I don't see this ending soon. When, when we started this project, we were told the road failed because of grass, the lawn. Keeping the, the road from, uh. From raining. It's perfectly wrong. The road failed because of poor installation. Poor crap, poor installation. I moved out there in eighty-four, we had gravel road. They finally in eighty-five, they put down the first coat. This whole time we put up with. Binches of, uh, manhole covers sticking up that we had to drive around. Finally in eighty-six, they put the second layer down. And I do believe the roadway deteriorated. Because they didn't finish the road, I guess it was due to lack of funds. Alright. Uh. The road, the puddling was caused because roadway sunk, because it wasn't done properly to begin with. And that was the fault of the developer. Not sure who did the paving. But I was there from the very beginning, so. I saw what happened. For our plan call for properly compacted stone with a hard surface. The top layer is plain loose stone. I watched as they whipped this in. They had a shaker, they shook the gravel out. Went over it once with a roller, I was at properly compacted. One time, they went across with a roller. Bottom, the bottom has all the finds, all the binder, top is all loose, that's why it's all over the neighborhood. Now, the village administrator claimed that if they changed the design, they could be sued. Why would they be sued if the, if the paver had paved a few more square feet, who's going to do the suing? And by the way, who was it that put the gravel in, was it a village crew? I, I watched, I thought it was guys from the village. Our big thing is, right after.
You've got about thirty seconds left, okay? Take half a second.
Right after. You did our road, you did Cedar Lane. Cedar Lane is paved. Long lawn. Why don't they have, if it was so important to have the gravel edge protected? Why, why is that paved? Long lawn. Supposed to have a forty-foot right of way, you couldn't very well duck it out and put the stone in like you did in our subdivision.
Okay, final comment? Um.
Yeah, my, my final comment is, I think this whole thing was a textbook case of bureaucratic gaslighting. Information that we got from the village, we got all kinds of different stories all the way through.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, just a quick comment here, um, there will be an agenda item on. Works to address your concerns, we would expect to see you there. Thank you.
We have one more.
Uh, one more on this. On this second Monday of March. Please make your. Here. So. There will be come further than so.
Uh, my name is Cassie Bardwell, I'm sorry, my husband couldn't be here to be coaches of our C S for draft school. Um, we are coming in with the board tonight just to address some negligence completed during the road construction and utility work by Dorna this summer. Um, it did affect our plumbing this winter, there were two full water bottles that blocked our sewer pipe that were found, um, in our sewer lateral by a plumber and. Blowed out. Seeing my husband and I, one thousand seven hundred, three dollars and thirty cents, so we're asking for help from the village. To not only cover those costs, but then if we need to buy more things moving forward, as we have found several different pieces of damage from Dorners negligence. Um, help with those costs, we had another incident happen with Dora this summer, and so what we're asking for right now is that. One thousand seven hundred and three dollars, it reflects the cost we've currently incurred from the negligence from Dora. Uh, we have had multiple incidents with Dora and the village, we don't feel we were supported during our first incident. And we've had continued lack of support from the village with our second claim as well. It has not been a pleasurable experience working with the village nor Dora through this. We feel strongly the village is here to support. And protect its residents, we do not feel that the village has held Dora accountable for their negligence this summer. We're happy to provide details, documentation, video footage, email per request of this incident as well as the others.
Thank you. Alright. Next, uh, business. President, I have two questions here, number one, um, the appointment of Jackie Beer, the community development authority and joint review board. Letting you leave the area. So I would look for a motion. Second, I'm going to approve the appointment of Jackie Beer to the CDA and to the joint review board.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second, any discussion? For vote, all in favor, say aye. Say. That motion carries. Report of finance, Jesse.
Um, I would actually, this is an item, uh, that was sent forward to the village board with no recommendation, however. Since this time, uh, the claim was resubmitted, uh, with more specific detail, so thus it is separate and distinct. And different from what was, um, coming forward out of the finance committee, so that said, I would actually recommend the village board table this. And take up the most recent claim that has, uh, been submitted as that is in our, um, procedures and protocols right now.
Okay. Table this and work with. Um, the. Clang. Was affected by this.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second.
A question, so, um, so we're putting this off until. We make changes in our ordinances?
We're putting. I am recommending tabling this because a new claim has been filed. This, what we have now. At a staff level and with CivMIC, our insurance carrier, is different than what the finance committee looked at. And sent up to village board, so in essence, that new claim kind of makes this one that's on the agenda this evening almost a moot point. Because we have new information and very specific information with a specific claim number associated with it. So that is working through the process right now, thus making this obsolete, if you will. Yeah, it's part of the process, yep. Yep, we're absolutely going to be working with the homeowner on it, yep. And, yep.
But we want to make sure that you're aware that. That. Open, um, you've got a couple of claims. That, you know, what I. Hope for the ability to turn. That discussions on this. So I think right now. Will be in contact. Trustees issues. Okay, so a motion in second for tabling of this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries, I am going to go back to the president for a second, it's one thing, we have a thank you letter here, um. Dear Jake and graphic public works employees, thank you for your timely, efficient and great way. You took care of replacing my mailbox, you exceeded my expectations, living in the same building for Braithin for fifty-five plus years. It proved to be a great move, as recent widow, this experience is helping me to stay. Boom, boom, for a bit longer. Do a great job, and I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate it sincerely, sincerely, me. Land art sixteen oh six North Fine Street. Submit this record. Hey, thank you, let's go to the, uh, report of public works. If we're looking, um, we're taking twenty. As it's owned. For, uh, contract with TRC Environmental for. For groundwater monitoring work as amended by staff, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, Jesse.
Sure, very high level, this is, uh, required annual testing that we do, um, and then report to the DNR with regards to the Lime Kiln area and the West Plume area. Um, this is, uh, budgeted work, um, and again, it is, uh, part of our work with the DNR to monitor and work, continue to work towards closure. Of these environmental issues here in the village.
Very good, in motion in second to recommend the report approved contract TRC Environmental for twenty twenty-four groundwater monitoring work as amended by staff, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion of this? All in favor, say aye. Both, that motion carries. Number two, motion to recommend the village board accept proposal for in day. Five eight inch meters, six hundred staple fork radio registers and fifty-four dual fork radios for across not to exceed two hundred fifteen thousand. Dollars, this seems pretty straightforward for, um, meters to continue.
Correct.
Electronic water monitor.
Correct, this is all part of the ongoing, uh, water meter changeout program, um, there was a little bit of a delay. Um, we'll call it during COVID, if you will, um, because of the supply chain issues, however, um, those have been, uh, rectified to the extent we are ramping back up our efforts.
Very good, I'll need a motion. Second. Motion subject. Favor say aye. The motion to recommend the board will purchase. Be four F three fifty gasoline truck with body from Eric Von Flavorn brand for a net price forty-eight thousand three hundred hours. Where we're going to miss is replacing existing.
Correct.
Fifteen diesel.
Yep, simply turnover within the utility fleet, yep.
Budgeted.
Yep.
Okay, very good, um, this was approved by the, uh, public works, I'll look for motion in a second.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. That carries, motion number four, to recommend to the village board to approve the purchase of a new twenty twenty-four tan anti-vender H T ten for purchase not to exceed thirty six, thirty thousand six hundred forty-three thousand.
Yes, there are, um, multiple, um, um, valves that are difficult to get to with regular vehicles. Um, along the inner urban trail as well as in the new Stonewall, um, Farms, uh, subdivision. Um, also, this UTV would look to, um, provide service of moving items around within the yard. And not, um, um, taking up a, uh, full-size, uh, maintenance truck to do so, um, a lot of, uh, use, uh, um. For this particular vehicle, um, that said, it is, uh, a part of the twenty twenty-four, um, adopted budget.
Very good, we need a motion, uh, to recommend village board group purchase of a new twenty twenty-four vendor H T ten for purchase price, that is thirty thousand six hundred forty.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
The motion, second, any discussion? Done, if both all in favor, say aye. Carries, all right. Bye, busy night for public works. Motion to recommend the village board to approve the purchase of a new Watts Standard LX Gas fifty. Single Turner valve maintenance trailer for price not to exceed eighty-two thousand nine hundred ten dollars.
This is for the purchase of a piece of equipment, uh, within the utility to help staff with the, um, regular exercising of valves throughout the village, it is towed behind a vehicle, it can also be towed. Behind the, uh, previously, um, approved UTV to, um, simply, um, expedite the valve ex, um, exercising, um, jobs that need to be done by regularly by the utility staff. So it is a matter of, um, um, utilizing technology to our advantage and, uh, helping with efficiency to exercise valves in a timely manner.
Very good. Move to approve. Open second discussion. Production on purchase of the box standard. Gas, you can see the turnabout maintenance trailer. I think. None, all in favor, say aye. Areas, motion number six, motion recommended to the village board to authorize purchase of a twenty twenty-five Mac GR six four B chassis with a sixteen-foot steel dump body for a price not to exceed two. One thousand eight hundred. Dollars and fifty cents.
Yes, this is purchase of a, uh, dump truck, um, to assist utility with main breaks and not to have to, um, take away equipment from the public works. Um, this will, a matter of efficiency for the utility to have, um, their own, uh, dump truck at their disposal. Um, it is coming forward with the recommendation as noted.
Very good. Motion direct. Chassis, dump body, a person to exceed two oh one eight. Five zero.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Um, Jim?
I was right here the other night at the meeting because my back was towards your. Brendan when he was talking, like, we only have one bid on this. Is that correct?
Yeah. They're just trying to get you to come by, we're in like the order two. So we'll get it in the fourth quarter of this year. Just, it's still supply issues.
And I understand other vendors had been reached or contacted, but did not provide a response. Okay.
Lisa?
This will also help. With, so, is that nice? That you can jump out on the front if things are rough and. If we can buy, buy, um, the little work. Like downtown and we advise, we trust them out, we got in that situation, we need to help, yes. Okay, yeah, that was a big for me. Sharing.
Always a good thing. Alright, so we have questions here, motion second, all in favor, say aye. Both. Motion carries, finally, motion number seven, recommend to the village board to set the following twenty twenty-four fees. Art service area ICF per acre, two thousand thirty dollars. East service area ICF per acre, three thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars. Eight-inch equivalent sanitary sewer fee per linear foot, one thirteen dollars forty-one cents. Eight-inch equivalent water main charge. Per linear foot, ninety-one dollars eighty-seven cents. Road sidewalk construction per linear foot, two hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy-five cents. I forty-three list station per acre, four thousand five hundred nine dollars and forty-one cents. The following list station per acre, one thousand three hundred forty dollars and ninety-six cents. Ninth Avenue list station per acre, one thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-one cents. The I forty-three sewer and water crossing, water main per acre, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. I forty-three sewer and water crossing sanitary sewer per acre, seven hundred one dollars. Equivalent residential, uh, equivalent residential connection ERCP, one thousand two hundred five dollars. That motion again, so I'll look for a motion, second, please, table.
I'll second it.
The motion in second, so that motion is before us, is there any discussion?
Very briefly, for the board's, uh, edification, these are development-related fees, they are adjusted on an annual basis tied to the construction index. That said, in reviewing the, uh, meeting minutes, I do understand that there is an interest in twenty twenty-five to review these with a more formal study. Um, by staff, but otherwise, it is, um, already established that again, these are. These fee adjustments are tied to the construction index, in essence, the, uh, CPI as it relates to, um, construction activity. Um, that is the basis for the adjustments, but again, um, there, there is, uh, had, was discussion at the committee level to take a, um, a little bit more in-depth look in the future.
Alright, so we have one second, further discussion on this. On discussion at this point, I'm going to give a reset, aye. Always. That's what I'm carrying, so it's positively perfect, perfect, law agreement, termination request.
Yep, I'm actually going to work a little bit backwards on this, uh, IFC, um, what, what, um, staff is looking for this evening is simply direction, um, from the village board as to whether or not. There's any interest in having this conversation, quite frankly, so that brings us to the request itself. The requests, um, are the, uh, owners of Positively Perfect, uh, twelve twenty-nine, twelve thirty-one, twelfth Avenue, formerly known, uh, for, the former location of Slowpoke's, uh, store. Um, they did relocate their pet grooming business to this, uh, site, and that said, there is a parking lot adjacent, directly adjacent to the building. That is subject to a, um, easement and sharing, um, arrangement whereby in essence, the number of spots there is split in half whereby. Half are designated for the, uh, private ownership, the other half are retained as public parking. Um, at the time this was established, um, back in two thousand eight, this is all part of the ongoing effort to ensure adequate off-street parking in the downtown area. Um. As the IFC notes, the, um, um, the, the particulars of the, uh, s- uh, situation. And with that, again, the request is before us as to whether or not the agreement can be terminated. And the entire parking lot be dedicated to, uh, Miss Bookholz and the, um, uh, business for their own private use. Um. So again, the staff is simply looking for direction this evening, um, a site plan and the background information was attached to the IFC. But, um, again, before staff, uh, goes down a path per se, um, we, we want to understand whether or not there is, um, a, a temperature for, uh, actually having this discussion.
Okay, so essentially. Or just repeat this again, right direction staff, see the discussion three. Possible termination for. Parking lot maintenance agreement, twelve twenty-nine, twelve thirty-one, twelve. Second. So. She needs specifically, I need a motion to provide direction. To the staff on whether to proceed with discussions through possible termination or we. To the parking lot maintenance agreement. That's the ability. Are with. With this owner, um, to see, um, what we could negotiate with them.
Yep.
And, uh, then that would be brought back to. Right, Jessica?
So I, I just think specifically staff needs to know whether the village board wants to authorize staff to, to. Negotiate release of the agreement or whether the village board is interested in continuing to share the parking spaces, public and private. So either.
Is it, is it a full termination of it or is it a revision of the easement?
Decision to whether to terminate it and forward or just to be able to have this discussion. Then.
Yep, basically, i- is the village board, um, comfortable with allowing staff to either discuss termination? To either discuss termination or revision of the easement that's in place? Yep, consensus discretion.
Okay, so we'll look at. We'll start to the side um. Yes, yes.
Yes, 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 what?
Yep, yep.
Yes. What?
Is it to terminate or to revise? Like either completely wipe it out, wipe out the parking easement and allow for a full and turn it over to the private entity? Or revise the language of the easement to maintain a sharing um of the spaces between public and private use? Sure.
First of all, I'm. All take a look. Right.
Correct.
So I think the question for Austin's board is. Do you wish to terminate this agreement and give her all spaces?
Yep.
Or do negotiate with her to? Look at this um agreement that we have and perhaps revise it? Perhaps that she would look at purchasing some of this or she would pay for it.
Yes, absolutely. So obviously, there's, there's others, there's other, there's a range of options in between in continuing the status quo or. Turning over the the spaces to her. I'll just remind the board that the village paid for the installation. Of the driveway, drive aisle, and the um spaces and curving. On on the property. Um, the property owner is responsible for snow removal on the site. And again, as Administrator Tice alluded to, there are, there are four um.
Public space. And three.
There are three. Private spaces and four public spaces. Um, and there, there's um actually a timeframe uh that they're signed, a a two-hour maximum. Um, and so there, you know, these are, but the property owner has requested that the properties, that the spaces be turned over to her.
So, before we go to consensus here, I'm sure there are questions out there. So I'm gonna start with questions. Send Dave. Says something, let's clear out consensus at this point in time and just see if you have questions regarding. What the, perhaps what the options would be. Is that fair enough?
Okay, my question is then, is she looking to purchase these spots from the village or are we just giving them to her?
And no discussion with. Exchanged.
Michael Hill.
You know, I think the question is the the new property, if you look at your map and you ever drive, drive uh by. Slowpokes, to be honest, I just did it for the first time ever the other week. Uh, but if you ever drive in there on the south side of Slowpokes, you'll see there's an entryway into a larger parking lot to the west. But then there's these seven spots on the north side that mainly serve the old Slowpokes and now the the pet shop, the grooming shop. Uh, she's approached, as as explained, she's approached approached the village to say, hey, you know, we, she did like to maybe alter the sites, maybe. The spots, maybe make them wider. Maybe she'd just like to take it all over. She was kinda questioning, why do we even have this? Historically, as Jesse pointed out, we were really, I think this was done in oh eight when there was really a dearth of downtown parking. I think it predates the parking lot across the street to the north of the old, you know, the old Graft estate. I don't think that was there at the time. I can't remember exactly, but anyway.
That, that's correct.
That's correct. So the negotiation at the time, every spot counted and. And the the village gained four spots from her. Long story even longer. I think the the question from staff is, do you? You know, is this a conversation that you want staff to engage with this property owner or? Is the feeling that just now we think status quo is, you know, the current agreement is where we should stay. You know, because we, we paid for these spots back in oh eight, we, we paved it, we created this parking spot, we said. Is there any interest, I guess, in having staff investigate revising the agreement with the property?
So my question is, so the last bullet point says the property owner has already terminated if the site was to be redeveloped. That means like, well, the the like, redeveloped. That that would not trigger, what, what property owner is not, doesn't see any changes on site? So the the clause about permitting the agreement would not be triggered. That, that's the only circumstance that would trigger removal of the, would trigger automatic removal of the agreement. Um, and then other, other changes to the agreement would have to be upheld by all parties.
Change of ownership is probably is not, would not.
Sure. Um, so I guess my, my first question is, um, this piece of property, this parking lot belongs to the owner of that building.
That's right.
Okay.
The land.
The land, yes. And, and there is an agreement from the prior owner. Um, if she so, if she bought this property from the prior owner, I would think that the. Prior owner's agreement wouldn't transfer over to the new buyer. On the land. Okay, I didn't see that in the opinion. Um, so she's, if she can take it all over, and I'm assuming it's for her business.
David, do we know how often this is used as public parking?
And anecdotally, um, we, we can say it is mildly used, but we do not have any formal counts, no.
It is signed.
Yep.
Signed as, as public versus, versus, you know, for private use. So, but no, we just, you don't have any data.
So, on that same topic, is there a sign in front of her building that says public parking within barrel? Yes. That was my question.
And, and you know, I, I guess I'm gonna take a look at this as his um. If the village back in two thousand eight. Did make an investment in that property, it did make an agreement. Also looks like we have a long-term maintenance agreement. Correct. So, um, we are holding to our agreement to maintain that and we did make investment, which I'm sure is amateurized over certain. Yeah, at this point in time, my, my belief is is that we've gotta be able to look if it's. This is something she wants and we're going to do that, there should potentially be some remuneration here for the village. Uh, if we decide that we, if there's consensus that we don't, um, that we're, we're okay in keeping that. Did I get that correct? So with that, any discussion and I'm gonna go back for two choices here. Negotiate, yes, for a um remuneration or negotiate with terminated.
What was the first option?
Negotiate with her, potentially, or for remuneration from her.
Not sure what that mean. Okay, to, to, to. Release the agreement and negotiate a price for uh installation of the village.
So I think those are the two choices out there.
Choice?
Choice was, um, we terminated.
Well, there's a third choice. There's status quo, status quo.
Not saying we keep the spots that we have, she keeps what she has.
That's the question. This is directed for Director Thomas. Do you have a consensus to what the typical prices?
We could definitely look at what we paid for it, um, eight and. Say that.
And we've never done any snow remover or maintenance on it since two thousand eight? Oh, we have, okay. Oh, they. Okay.
I, I'm just gonna go and say status quo.
Same.
Status quo.
Status quo.
To negotiate for remuneration.
See what she really wants. I mean, maybe she would say, hey, I'll give you another spot or. She has, she has nothing else to give, just to be clear. I mean, she wants all the spaces. And, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm a lot. So there's, you know. She would say, you know, going back to her, hey, I, I understand you don't wanna give it to me because it looks like the majority is this.
Appreciate everybody's input at here, so we're gonna go. About status quo. Okay, thank you all for helping us get through that. Okay, let's talk about Port Washington Road Falls Traffic Signal Intergovernment. Governmental agreement.
Um, I'm actually going to defer to Assistant Administrator Wolf as she took the lead on this project um and um would be able to walk through. The uh cost share. What I will open with is we do have um approvals from the township and Ozaki County on the proposed cost share. Um, with that, I would turn it over to um Assistant Administrator Wolf.
Yes, I think as you all know. Indicated the need for a new. Both of the development agreements for both of those um projects included the requirement that those developers. Pay their proportionate share based on traffic counts that will um go through the intersection at, at time of construction. The, so that is in the table called Table Six in the staff report. Um, we. Working with the county and the town on. And with the county and the town have um agreed to also contribute towards the cost. There was some um negotiations with the county about um what share of the cost that, that they would pay. Um, the village and the county are kind of splitting what's called the background traffic, which is basically the traffic um that's going down. For Washington Road that doesn't originate from any specific destination, um, like the Farmstead Falls or the Seasons. So we're sharing that cost. The, the county has agreed to um fund twenty percent of the cost and the. Town will, will um fund point zero five percent of the cost because that's, because their new um village town hall, excuse me, town hall. It's located at the northwest corner of this intersection. Um, so this is really the, the final step in the process um to get village board approval and then execute the agreements that all parties. Um. Finalize that. Uh, Director Thomas has provided uh or has published a bid request for design and construction of the. As indicated in the attached um agreement. If both the, if either the Seasons or the Farmstead starts construction and is working on um footings and foundation. We would, we, the village would start construction on the signal later this year.
Very good. Be looking for a motion to approve Port Washington Road and Falls Road Traffic Signal Intergovernmental Agreement that's presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Do a motion and second, any discussion?
Really quickly, um, I, I do just wanna add that the Dr. Grezar is proposing a new mixed-use commercial building. On Port Washington Road. The staff is, village staff is working on an updated traffic study for that site. And we're suggesting, and while it hasn't been finalized yet by, by, by commission or the village board. We're suggesting that, that that development would also share in the cost of this traffic signal. So the percentages may um. Uh, flux uh be in flux a little bit, um, but everyone would be responsible for their proportionate share of the traffic.
Okay, some question. Um, is with respect to doing that, obviously, it's a village. That a percentage come off the village of Grafton or off of every of these?
Based on the percentages. So the percentage is change.
Off of just the village portion. So right now that. Or that would go down by whatever amount you try.
Jessica, do you know, any updated word on Farmstead or Seasons? Are their plans active to begin of this year? Because I know Farmstead's been delayed.
We're having a pre-construction meeting for the Seasons. Uh. Early March. They are ready to start construction. They're. This next week, I believe, and will start um air control activities on that party in early March. So they're definitely um moving forward this spring. As far as the, the Farmstead, I, I, it's my understanding that. Uh, that that project will most likely move forward this summer rather than this fall. Um, we've received multiple calls from um subcontractors who are bidding the work. So, so it's my understanding that. Start construction this year. That's correct.
So.
Jessica, so under on Table Six, it does say existing twenty eighteen traffic. Um, is that referring to the, the numbers that were collected in twenty eighteen? Because I know there's been two other. Traffic studies uh recently.
There has been, but they weren't, um, the, the traffic counts that we took were only on Port Washington Road. And so we had to use slightly older traffic counts because that was the most recent data available for all intersections, for all areas of the, the.
I guess I'm just thinking since then, there's probably a lot more traffic. And it, would that, would it be who was to try to figure something out? Because wouldn't that change the percent of the cost share?
So as part of this new traffic study we're doing for Dr. Grezar, we did pay for um new traffic counts. And I believe it is all sections so that we won't have to rely on the twenty eighteen counts.
So it will be updated and people will, the percent will change. Yes, okay.
Uh. On a Grafton point five.
Zero five.
Yeah, zero. It's not that, that they're. Proposed building fell through there on Falls.
It's my, I understand that they're gonna go um back and re- and, and, and request bids again in the future. Um, but yes, all three of their, they rejected all three of their one recent bids.
Yeah, I think one of the questions is coming straight. They're gonna, they're gonna go on that building. I think they were just looking. Different, different pricing. So I think he's been pretty much.
It's about a month and so I thought it fell through.
Fair, fair question.
Uh, any other discussion here? Alright, good one. Second. Favor say. Jesse, let's go to the.
Certainly, before the board is a housekeeping resolution for a proposed budget amendment since the program area of general government. Within the overall general fund uh is slightly over budget. The overage is due to special election for filling the open uh position in Assembly District number twenty-four. Along with increased uh part-time staff wages for budget development assistance. Uh, this resulted in some unanticipated expenses. That said, to offset the overage as set forth in the attached resolution, we would look to. Uh, move um just over twelve thousand dollars from the community development portion of general government. Uh, within that general government program area um to um address those overages. Um, so while this one uh small portion of the general fund sees, sees the need for this adjustment. Um, it is important note that the remainder of the general fund. All pre-audit indicators show that the fund balance within the village's general fund will actually increase by approximately four hundred thousand dollars. So yes, we have one problem child, if you will, that we would look to address and clean up with this housekeeping resolution. But overall, the financial shape of um the village is uh continuing to improve with a um general fund, fund balance increase. Of approximately four hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, we'll be looking, uh, looking for offer a motion. Ready the twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Offer second.
Can I ask uh who, who um offered? Can I ask who who offered? Okay. And then Trustee Lufte was the motion. Excellent. Thank you.
So it says that her reason was increase part-time wages for budget development assistance.
We actually asked our part-time accountant Monica Stern to be an active part of our budget development team. And she has allotted a certain amount of hours being a part-time employee. She went above that, but that was. We did not think the additional hours to the extent what we we did not believe the additional hours we incurred were going to be that extensive. That said, they were, but for good reason. We put together a very solid budget and her help was pretty integral to that. Just another set of eyes. So that is part of the overrun per time. No, no, the impact fees are separate and distinct. Nope, actually, you'll be seeing this coming up in a very near future agenda where this would be the park public works police department fee study. Yeah, we're able to offset these costs because the twenty twenty-three allocation was more than we needed at that point. Please. Yep, yep.
Let's get to the board's base commission.
This has been an ongoing project since plenty of questions came up with the changeover in the board and the revisiting of the appointment processes and whatnot. It really came to light of the, in essence, piecemeal construction of the various codes and ordinances that govern the boards, committees, and commissions. They are currently scattered throughout the code. They were clearly enacted in a piecemeal fashion with inconsistent form and process. And with that, staff looked to rectify this matter and revisit in a comprehensive manner all of the ordinances that govern boards, committees, and commissions. So the goal of the project was really to create a single section within the code book, thus eliminating the need to search in in various sections for all the different committees for to lay out the the boards, committees, commissions. However, there are a couple that do remain unchanged. Those are with specific statutory powers such as the Community Development Authority. Looking for, the project looked to establish consistency of the appointment language for both members and chairs. Also look to establish clarity of purpose to avoid tie votes, change the among all of the different committees, also to update membership for various committees to provide for additional citizen engagement and participation. But overall, consistency and conciseness was the primary overarching goal. That said, significant changes of note. So I guess let me back up. So basically, we're looking at repealing and recreating section two point or chapter two point one zero. Basically, we would look to wipe that out and recreate it as presented with the listing of boards, committees, and commissions. These significant changes of note include discontinuance of ex officio members as they have not historically been used by any of the committees. Clarification of the appointment processes, whether it be members or chair, chairpersons. A significant change would be to the finance committee that is currently made up of four trustees. This would be renamed as the Finance and Personnel Committee to make it abundantly clear that not only is it finance, but also HR-related committee whereby any staffing, any job description, any wage rate, anything dealing with employees would come to finance and personnel to make that abundantly clear. Right now, it is currently one small sentence listed within the subsection of the finance committee and again, for clarification's point. Also, with the creation of the Finance and Personnel Committee, there would be membership changes. The finance committee, as it sits right now, is the village president and three trustees. We would look to create a finance and personnel committee with the president, two trustees, and two citizen members. The Board of Public Works would see a membership changes to be, instead of three trustees, we would go to two trustees and three citizens. The provision, the proposal calls for the deletion of the mid-marine committee as this is a membership for the village. It is not a recommending, nor is it a policymaking body of the village. We would look to reduce, change the membership of the Public Safety Committee slightly by adding a citizen member. So instead of three trustees and two town representatives, it would be two village trustees, one citizen member, and two town representatives. And we would also formally create the School and Village Liaison Committee by code. As you know, we have this committee. It stands. It is scheduled to meet quarterly as we move forward. That said, it is not codified anywhere in our ordinances, so we would look to formally create that. So the action is actually being requested this evening would be to direct staff to schedule a public hearing for this proposed code update. If there is a consensus among the village board on any particular feedback regarding the code, we can look at those adjustments as we would lead to the public hearing. Should the village board choose to direct staff to schedule that, which would be aimed for the first meeting in March.
Well, thank you, Jim. Just a couple of things that have been brought to my attention today, and this is not a perfect freedom. There are changes.
Working draft.
On this, so this really a board action, really one of the probably our heaviest policy discussion that we have this year. And, you know, honestly, as village president, what I found is when I went through and looked at code, looked at code two oh, there were some things we were doing, there were some things. And I think that whoever is my predecessor would have a clear line what we can get. I know Mike, you've been involved with this extensively. Staff has been involved with this. One of the things that came up today that I just learned and I thought was it came up to the Police and Fire Commission. By statute, Police and Fire Commission is a separate succinct entity from the village. And Chairman Roder brought up to me, and I greatly appreciate it that in the design of the chairman for this position, it should be separate and succinct from the village board making any recommendations other than appointment of members and approval of members. When it comes to appointing the chair of that, it's really no different than the library. It's the library committee. It's a separate committee. Does not report into the village. Kind of does, but it doesn't. But I think what what Mr. Roder brought up is that did some research and found out that very few of the Police and Fire Commissions actually have a president appointed by, I'm sorry, a president of the Police and Fire Commission appointed by a village president. I think that is a really good point, Paul. And I think that it really could read into the fact that president is trying to play politics for the police and fire which is against what the statute implies. And I think, I think that's probably a good move. So just my suggestion, we probably change that. Just my my sense here. The other thing, just to let you know is, you know, I think that what I've heard in the community. And it's one of the reasons why I think it's 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 just a great idea for us to have more citizen members on these boards. I love the work the trustees do, but I think we all go and we hear what we hear in our own neighborhoods or we hear what we hear at the bar. We hear what we hear at church. And, you know, I think what what really comes from this is when the decisions are made, it's really good to have public input from people who are commissioners or committee members and be able to expand that is is good for the village. In addition, I think it gives our village a kind of like a a nice bucket of people to pull from that in the future when we all step aside, that these people will be engaged in public service. They will want to be able to serve as trustees and that will have will have a much better representation of. Just my two cents worth. Again, I'm gonna stop talking at that point and address any questions, et cetera.
Yeah. So I like the idea of getting more citizen involvement. My my question is, how do they find out if there's an opening in the board? Can we get something out on our website about what that process is?
Absolutely.
We just appointed a Jackie figure to C CDA. I don't know if that was posted or not. Nevertheless, these other ones are gonna be more, we're gonna need more people. How do they go about finding out?
I think that's a great question. Talked about this with Jessica, talked about this with Jesse today. In fact, this does go, we are going to be able to put our invitations for people to apply to these, to these committees. Change it. We're going to need more people. And it's interesting, you know, as the president, they try to find people who are interested in this. We very rarely get people who apply. They don't apply. I think that's a good point, Jim. We need to be able to advertise this to the public saying, we're looking for more committee members. Really, there's nothing in it for them other than, you know, really being a committee member. We have to spend a great deal of time trying to sell them on the fact that, hey, it's one meeting a month. It's not gonna take much more time. I think that look to the directors to be able to find, for example, Amber's situation. If we were to add, I would look at Amber to be able to find additional additional engineers who might be willing to do that, perhaps finance, people who are skilled in finance and HR that could help. Goal. And I think that Jimmy Branca, excellent point. We advertise, we ask, people submit applications. We look at them and check the best person that's out there. Currently, that's me making a making them pick and saying, I think that person's a good person. You know, certainly, we could look at at, you know, the code basically states that I pick it and then the then the board approves or doesn't approve. You know, I'm going to discuss that, but I think that would require. So great point, Jim, but I think long answer to a short question is we need to add. And I think that's something that we're gonna need to do. If this is approved, then we're running short on time, which is if we're going to do it today, we have a public, we have a public hearing. We'll hold on it to the next meeting. We're gonna have to get an ad out if we decide that we're gonna do that so we can get people in because really the second meeting in March, I have just about three weeks to be able to find the people to appoint. We have to do it by the second meeting. So there. Thank you.
Okay.
Sure enough.
Yes.
Let's go to Amy.
Two of the committees I see that you have listed that the chair would be appointed by the president, under architecture review, under finance. Can we list what the processes on the other committees, for example, safety, how people about pointing a chair? I know we've had questions about that in the past.
On page thirteen, the Park and Recreation Board, under parent three, the village president shall designate one of the members as chairperson. I think what can be added there for clarity, subject to confirmation by the village board.
Let's go for it. So in the spirit of community engagement, some of the committees membership numbers that my board of seven in state statutes, there are others that we decide essentially. So for instance, finance and personnel. Among those that I don't believe are designated in state statute, we have some that are five, some that are seven. Would there be any interest among the trustees in standardizing that at seven, which could involve an additional trustee and an additional community? I don't know that we necessarily need to go down seven to five, or seven, for instance, where it's public works as five. So I'm just looking, since we're in this process, looking to engage the citizen in order and perhaps also clean things up and standardize things. Might there be interest in pushing for seven?
I got a comment there. I mean, I think it's a great idea. However, we need to get those people to volunteer to step up and and want to do it too. So I mean, if it's we can talk all we own, yeah, this is we were gonna change that we need at seven. But until we can find those people to do that, they're willing to do it, we may be stuck with the the numbers we have.
I think that's fair. I'm also a believer in if you go that they will come. Yeah, if they have opportunity and they know that there is opportunity.
I'm in favor, sorry.
Strongly, we have struggling, we have three trustees in the board. There could be no comments. You know, we have a majority of the quorum, and it gets to be sticky because, you know, I really do want people to be able to speak, whether they're trustees or whether there's a whether they're citizens. However, I think when we start stacking tracks on it and then one shows up, I think we may get into a little bit of problems with that. You know, it's certainly a discussion takes place and it puts the committee chair in a difficult situation to say if forums are can't discuss anything.
I think your comment. I think that probably the risk and possibly what drives the smaller, the smaller committee size. It's the, otherwise we'd have to notice for a forum at all, potential for.
And I don't think we're really good at that. Like we do a real good bad key, because if people, you know, people pick at the end of we don't want to be a bad key to result there and then, you know, we're kind of a violation of that sad notice. So it's like, you know, and again, for me, to be able to look at, well, hey, well, ex-committee, you know, we want, we want people have experience that can help us drive village. And we all think we have experience. I'll be honest with you. I don't have all the experience. Our people help help us, for example, in finance community. There, there are HR, HR people out there who could give us direction. Sure that there are people who are finance-based who, you know, can really help us with finance. But it's just just my whole first shot at challenge the staff that. And I would like to have this out earlier, but this is just quite a change.
I'd say I appreciate the concern about having three trustees on a particular board. That's fair. I I would be fine with two and five, should there be an interest. That gives even more opportunity for community.
And I think once we have this established at five, you know, we can look at that committee and say, Amber, Amber, you've got five, you want to go to seven? Will they all fit around your table? You know, we go seven. You know, we look at public safety, which is obviously if the if referendum passes, we're gonna count to three. So we're gonna need to expand those. So I think it's a lot easier if we have a unified code here that we can go back and say, hey, look. We're gonna need to add. What do we do with that? And at that point in time, we discuss it as a village board, say, you know, maybe we want to put an extra trustee on there. Maybe put another number out there. And that's really to give chiefs, both the chiefs, the ability to get input from the community. You know, for people who are really concerned about that. Lisa.
I had just had some housekeeping issues, but that's okay. So Jesse, on page four of that first batch, we're talking about architecture review board, and it looks like there might be some conflicting information there. The first paragraph under one says, follows one village trustee, one plan commissioner, not also serving as a trustee and three citizen members. But then down below under B, it talks about that member, maybe a village trustee or a citizen member of the plan commission. So I think that's conflicting, isn't it? Up on top, it says not serving as a trustee. And in B, it says may serve as a trustee.
We can look to rectify that. Is there a consensus of the board as far as may be a trustee or to rectify that conflict?
Jesse, you can't do it.
I'm sorry, is there a preference as to how to rectify that conflict?
Jesse.
Number one, under C B. Actually, we do born self consistent five members. And the second sentence says, one plan commissioner not also serving as a trustee. But then when you go down below where it says be plan commission member. It says such member may be a village trustee. So those two things are conflicting.
Uh, we're, we're currently. Jessica, give me a second.
Yes, again, we have five members, one village board member. Um, and one plan commissioner who is not also um, village board. So I would prefer. We continue that, that there be one trustee and then one member of the plan commission. So. Right, in the last, we have had the. Representative from the plan commission has been a trustee, and it, and it worked just fine. Um, so. Maybe, maybe the clarification isn't, isn't needed, but at that point then, I had an extra. Like. Dave, trustee Dave List was serving as, as, you know, both roles. So then I needed another resident member. So, um. It worked fine, I guess, in that, in that circumstance. If the board would feel more comfortable leaving it more open. And, and less structured, um, I'm, I'm fine with that as well. But I, I do think that there needs. One person from the plan commission and one person from village board.
We have two now, though, correctly, as a president and, yes, yeah.
The chair, um, who is trustee Armstrong, and then Mark Pachke is on like mission.
I like it. But I think you have one situation, or let's say maybe Mary Pat goes. Uh, she's a representative of the planning commission. Representative of the planning commission, and we also have Mark. Rather have one trustee that's appointed who's an independent of the planning commission, because it. But when it comes to the A R V, we want, we want architects and builders. Correct, Jessica?
Correct. So I think we could just simply. Strike. At. That we're on that second sentence that, that Carback corn down under B. Just strike the such member may be a village trustee or a citizen member of the plan mission.
Right.
The, the sentence would start, such appointment shall occur no later than the first meeting of the village board in May.
That Lisa?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Good, good. What else you have, Lisa?
And uh, public work. Okay, she. Um, under. B. Where we're talking about the membership of the board of public works shall consist of new. Which is two village board members. And three citizen members. The village president shall designate a chair. Now, right below that, it then says. The very last sentence of number two, the citizen members shall be appointed as. One shall serve for a two-year term, and one shall serve for a three-year term. But we're gonna have a third citizen, so that doesn't, that's not. Yeah, so.
Are the citizen numbers are two years? That's, this is why it becomes really difficult to track. I think we really don't want the whole board turning. That's why we put it in so much between the three. Paul is nodding. Yep. So we probably need to have the one, a two, and a three year. That makes sense, Lisa.
But doesn't it have opened the potential for all three being replaced in one year? After six years?
Yes. Um, however, that's.
Sometimes we uh. The initial, the initial appointment is one, two, and three years, and then thereafter, they go to a standard, everybody goes to a standard. Three, three-year term.
Yep.
And you constantly have the.
I'm good.
Admittedly, it's some record keeping.
And the board want to continue this. That's, that's a continued. Don't really wanna move people up unless they wanna move it. That's what it is. And wanting the A R V, we have vacancy, we have vacancy. Up here adjusted. The builder might complain somebody who's got building trades. Somebody who's interested in building trades, and it's a nice mixture of people who are. Perfect. That film that, that thing, that beautiful thing in the sky, that we have the people build it. The major capital. So I think, I think it's good. I'm okay with one, the initial of one, three, and nine of three years, but Lisa doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I didn't want us to lose that third person that we just asked.
Uh, go ahead, show one, you have the board.
Yeah. So the uh.
It's just gonna ruin mine.
I'm not using it. Page, um, nine, and part of review. Um, it talks about, let's see. Oh, I did have a question. So in the board of reviews. The same as the board of appeals?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, the board review is the, um, maybe. Months a year and review the assessment. Okay, and then, um, for you, zoning board of appeals in the board that, um, addresses variant requests. Yeah, don't, yeah, and then there's the joint review board. Where things is on the dark, I could be only presented, right. So my question on this one is on the right side of page nine where there's the comments. Um, kind of back and forth between Mike and Jesse, and then, um, and I don't know if this is just a mistake or if I don't understand it. The last comment says, I like listing the duties of the B O A. For consistency within the ordinance is, will we include? Those. That information in this, even though this is a board review?
No, that was specifically. Yeah, that was specifically speaking about the board review, that comment. Yep, yep. Yes, right, right.
Um, I know the recommendation is keep everything the same, right? But when I look back to look at the old ordinances, there's still language in there from nineteen ninety. That talks about like the first time the board started. And it talks about we appointed the one-year term and the two-year term and the three-year term. Would that be cleaned up a little? I don't, just so that we recognize that we've looked at it since nineteen ninety, I'm sure. Um, and I think the only thing was. That there's two village board members. Five citizens and C B A. Yeah, that's it. I'm sick of that one. Um.
Oh, that's good.
All right, um, let's see, I pay. We. Mine's dimension. It funny, um, talks about, um, and is true, you, you recommended we, um. The red one. Um. It did. Talk about, and I think I looked in the village ordinance. How it is now, and that's just why I'm asking about this, because you recommended it stay the same. Um, it does say in the village ordinance about compensation for the citizen members. Which. Very funny. Yeah, so should we clean that up? And I think that was two point two eight, point zero five zero. Is if we're gonna keep that the same, I think language is in there that talks about compensation. Yeah, and I didn't think we had that.
Competition.
Okay, and then, um, like you were saying on public safety, that's page twenty-two. Um, there was no indication of, you know, like the president appointing the chair. And, yeah, and I think we, maybe that was just missed, because we did talk about it last year. So that was my only thing about that, did make it a point to. Know the other committees where you're gonna appoint the chairs, or maybe actively consider. And. Page twenty-five, is in the red line. Board of Appeals. Um, so, my question, I'm confused. Is this the same as? This board of appeals, the same as zoning board of appeals? Yes, it looks like we need to. That language, yeah, that was our, the B O A versus zoning board of appeals. And, um, it did talk again down under A. The members of the board shall serve at such compensation. To be fixed by ordinance and shall be removable by the president. Compensation?
Yes, compensation.
That's what that means, right? Okay, so maybe. Get rid of that little. Um. I know I'm crazy right now, but I've. And then I think there's the last one was page twenty-six. Let's see. Uh, page twenty-six, I think under number two. So this is the same thing, right? The. Zoning board of appeals, Jessica. On page twenty-six. When number two. The appeal fee, this is what they have now, correct? I'm sorry. Yes. By a property owner. Is this different from what we have now? Um, I mean, we, there, there is a, an application fee, go to the zoning board of appeals. Whether it's a developer or a citizen.
Yes.
And is this something we're gonna be looking at going forward with? Citizen issues or no, that's not related?
This is, this is an application fee. To. We, we don't. Don't talk about application fees for any other of these committees, held in plan commission, architecture review board, or if you may, that do have application fees. So maybe it would be appropriate to strike this new section here. Uh, discussing fees for any of. Or maybe we. Go back and check to make sure we're consistent.
If it's just a pass.
It is not passed through public.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the conclusion on this one?
Great.
Great.
And it, yeah, and then because it's not, this is on the other.
Great, Jessica. Great.
That's it.
Anybody else? Oh, Amy.
Jesse, I think like, if you be able to, um. Keep them like all in the same format, like it's really easy on the architecture review board, you have membership appointment, number two appointment of members. But then some of the other ones, they're all mushed together in a paragraph.
Uh, accepting all of the track changes. So what I can do is I can get that. Clean copy, even cleaner with regards to ensuring spacing and whatnot, um, and getting rid of any comments that are outstanding and what have you. Um, so absolutely, the, the appearance can, can be shored up. Yep, yep.
All right, the sign of the word. I just have one thing to say. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, so the action requested here, we have a motion and second direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the proposed code update. Um, one of the questions I wanted to ask here is, um, we, with public. Public hearing, we have folks show up, we need to change it. Are we going to be able to vote? That night, or do we put it out, or? The village board have any, this is gonna be noticed, people are gonna be able to show up, we can make changes. Jesse, would you, um?
The board, the board absolutely could take um, action that evening, just simply in that action, nope, any revisions that come out of the public hearing. Yep.
That acceptable. This clean, so. But, kind of put, put this together, otherwise it's gonna. In short time. All right, so we have a motion in second. Favor say.
I.
By the way, that was a motion in second with corrections. All right, thank you for all that hard work. That was a. All right, village administrators report.
Yep, um, the uh, governor has signed the. Bear maps legislation, um, there was a legal Wisconsin municipalities email that came out today with some additional information about. This legislation, but what it really boils down to is this is a significant step towards the redistrict, redistricting. Of the state to delineate legislative representative throughout the state of Wis- representation throughout the state of Wisconsin. Um, that said, um, there is some realignment. Um, I did try to do some additional research prior to this evening's meeting. Um, except the maps that I have seen are, are still a bit unclear and difficult to read. I don't believe we're gonna see any significant changes of our representation in this, in our area. Um, that said, it is something we're, we're keeping an eye on, and if there are changes to our re- state representation. Um, we'll absolutely make sure to keep the village board informed of that, but that's a pretty significant piece of legislation. There is another piece of legislation, uh, known as Act Ten. This is about a decade old law. That was passed under former Governor Scott Walker. That significantly limited the collective bargaining rights of most public employees. Uh, it, it did exempt police and fire, um, from, uh, that, uh, um, restriction. Um, that said, um, it, it, uh, Act Ten is under a new legal challenge. Um, to date, Act Ten has been unsuccessfully challenged twice in state court and once in federal court, however it has been upheld. That said, there is a new legal challenge pending, as I mentioned, uh, which, uh, um, with the current status of the state Supreme Court. There is, uh, some significant, um. Um, not concern, but, um, foresight that there could be changes. Um, to Act Ten or a full repeal of that legislation. That said, if that, uh. Legal challenge is successful and Act Ten is changed. In any way, shape, or form, or fully repealed, that will have ramifications to not only employees here in the village of Grafton. But also us as an employer, where we may, uh, be looking at additional collective bargaining responsibilities. Reestablishing, um, labor relations and what have you. So that is something we are watching very closely and will keep the board apprised. A couple of items in-house, um, auditors will be in-house next week for the village's annual audit of its financial records. Um, the election training by the clerk's office for our, uh, poll workers begins next week. This is an annual refresher training. For all those folks that help us out. Last but not least, a quick update on the fire and EMS referendum and our working group's, uh, progress. Uh, public outreach is in full swing. We have web contact, web content posted. Um, across the various stakeholder municipalities that direct links. The village of Grafton is hosting content for each of the stakeholder communities, being Town of Grafton, Town of Sockville, and Village of Grafton. Social media content is, um, ongoing and will be continued to be updated. A general inquiry inbox is available for email inquiries, uh, from folks from any, uh, um, of the stakeholder communities. Um, the first mailer should be out very soon. I did, uh, provide a proof copy. Of that mailer on the day of this evening for the village board members. Um, with that, um, there is a, uh, speaking engagement, uh, with the Legion. To discuss, um, the, the fire and EMS referendum, what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, what the overall goal of the request is. And also, public open houses are planned, um. Let me make sure I get those dates right. February twenty-ninth at six thirty P M at the Rose Harms Legion Post. And then again, on March fourteenth, also at the Rose Harms Legion Post. These are open houses for village and town residents to come and learn more about the, um. Referendum proposal in person. That, um, one of those sessions will be recorded and posted online. Um, speaking of videos, uh, Chief Rice and I did finish up a video message, um. Last week, it is being edited now and will be posted, um, online, uh, for distribution in the near future. So. Um, that said, I, I am not above signing autographs, but I'm not famous yet, so. Um, look for that online posting, but that is, uh, the update from my office.
Yeah. Referendum does. There's a story. Very good. Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate that. Um, there are no licenses to approve. Or bills, uh. Google ability expenditures. Thousand ninety-four dollars and eighty cents on the motion second.
I'm moved to approve.
Second, promotion. Second, I did see one question. Questions that are. Right, left, right, left. Okay, very good. No questions, all in favor say, hi.
Hi.
This time I'd like to. Full session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, nineteen point five one E for. Creative bargaining matters. So, selling tree bed board, what do we think this was?
Ten fifteen minutes tops.
Good. Thank you all for coming. Open session. After that meeting, will be action?
Yes, there is action requested.
I think.
Oh.
Uh, we'll need the vote. We'll be forced. From, uh, oh, motion, uh, motion to, uh, convenable session, in motion second. So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. I'm. Thank you all.